So all sound can be heard. There's no speakers or anything up here, but everything projects. So even as you're in the audience, that sound is picked up within the room. We do have an overflow over where registration is. And then as far as restrooms, you go off this room here to the left, and a quick shop right, there's the restroom for those that may need to. We'll be starting shortly. We just... And there's a flag, yes, we do have a flag.
Oh, I didn't know if you saw it.
Yes, yes. It's back there too.
We will begin momentarily. There's just a tech issue, but we will begin soon. Thank you for your patience, everyone. And can you all hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear us from back there? Okay. Thank you.
Tyrone, can you hear us out there?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four work session of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. You'll notice that the flag is projected on the screen to my left and behind us as well. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to today's board work session. Although this is a work session, we will need to address and vote on a few resolutions first. This step is essential to ensure we can proceed with our discussions on key topics. Our agenda includes reviewing the cellphone policy. And I do want to remind everyone that the board will evaluate the policy to determine whether revisions or updates are needed, assessing its effectiveness, ensuring it's being properly implemented, and considering any new policy suggestions, as well as the school culture and climate safety and security screening system. We are committed, as a board, to keeping these discussions open and transparent, involving the input from the public, students, and staff. Additionally, we plan to forward the cellphone policy, possibly the screening system, to the policy committee. This will allow the committee to incorporate comments and suggestions from the board, families, students, and the broader community into the development and revisions of the policy. I do want to remind everyone, the board is responsible for setting the policy, the what. And it is the district's duty to implement the decisions made by the board, the how. And that's really important for everyone, especially in the discussions that we're going to be having the next couple of days. We have allotted two hours today for these discussions, and we will dedicate another two hours tomorrow to continue our conversation on school culture and climate. Thank you for your participation and engagement as we tackle these important issues together. And I do want to say that again, thank you to all of you. These are not easy conversations, and we are so pleased that all of you are here. Some of you are not here, but you have shared your comments and your thoughts, and we appreciate it very much, staff, community members, and fellow board members as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four agenda presented before this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, VP. Second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Kathy.
No, it was not me.
It wasn't even Kathy. It was not me.
Oh, it was you, Jamaica. Oh, my goodness. So thank you, board member Jamaica. Any discussions, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting agenda carries. At this time, we will welcome for a public comments. We do have three people signed up. Before I do call you to share your comments, I do want to read a comment period script. So, "Good evening, community members. We are now entering the public comment period for our meeting. Although we typically do not welcome public comments during work sessions, we understand how critical the topics on today's and tomorrow's agendas are. Therefore, we are making an exception and allowing public comments for these sessions. Please note that during this period, the board is here to listen. This is not a time for discussion or immediate responses. Rather, it's an opportunity for us to hear your perspectives. We take your comments seriously and may need to process and research the issues you raise. We will address your concerns either at a future meeting or have the appropriate staff member follow up with you as needed. Additionally, under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain comments or questions about specific school personnel. We assure you that such matters are taken seriously and should be directed through the proper administrative channels. We are aware that our nation and community are currently polarized on various issues. We want our school board meetings to model respectful dialogue and mutual respect for differing viewpoints. Therefore, we insist that all speakers and attendees maintain respect for each other's opinion. Disrespectful comments or personal attacks directed at individuals, including employees or board members, will not be permitted. Should this occur, you will be asked to conclude your comments. Please address your remarks directly to the board rather than to the audience. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess until orders restored. Additionally, if you prefer, you may submit written comments to the board instead of speaking during this period, and these written comments will be attached to the board minutes for transparency and record-keeping. Public comments will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, and the board clerk will manage the timing to ensure fairness and efficiency. And our board clerk is over to the right, Michelle. We will enforce these time limits to ensure that as many members of the public as possible have the opportunities to speak. The board now welcomes public comments. We do have three individuals on the list, and I do want to welcome Arianna Miles to the podium. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, Arianna. Good. I said good. I meant hello.
Hello. That's okay. I knew what you meant. Thank you. All right.
So I'm a fellow teacher. I've been in the school district my whole life. I was recently at a PD, and the keynote speaker said, "One of the biggest problems in education was our ability to keep making decisions based on beliefs rather than research." That was from Lacey Robinson. See, I cited my source in the thing, quote, right? So this should go for the cellphone issue. This should go for the most effective way to keep people safe. This should go for all of our decisions. We are literally an education institution, which should show that we should use academia to determine best courses of action. And this is a national issue, but because I'm talking about here, my home, my place where I went to school, the place where I work, and the one I pay taxes to, I decided to bring it here. I watch board meetings and conversations in and around school about feelings and beliefs instead of about factual information. We need to make decisions based on what's best for our students driven by research and data, not agendas and feelings. Let me be clear, when I say research and data, I'm not talking about an article shared on Facebook, or a quick Google search, or a one-off paper. I'm talking about peer reviewed and not one-offs. How we deal with cellphones should be thoughtful and data-driven, and what we do for the elementary school shouldn't necessarily be done what we do for middle school or high school, or what we do in ninth grade shouldn't always be what we do for twelfth grade. Though, side note, we were failing our students long before the cellphone issue. Based on at least thirty studies, metal detectors do not make schools safer. What they are responsible for is making school feel more like prison, which results in a decrease of attendance and which then results in an increase in failures. What is effective in keeping schools safe, someone might ask? Relationships, social-emotional learning, anonymous tip lines, improving the climate of the school. All of those have been found to be more effective than metal detectors in multiple studies. But if we are going to say metal detectors keep everyone safe, then that should be for everybody. It should be for... If it's going to be for students and community members, then it also should be for staff. There have been more disgruntled adults than teenagers in these horrific events. So if we're going to make protections for everyone, then staff should not be excused from going through them. I implore our district not to make rash decisions out of beliefs and feelings, that we make choices based on what research and data tells us. Unless we don't trust academics and would rather trust our guts, then I wonder why we would lead an education system at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would like to welcome John Youngkin. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Ed members and Superintendent Cotto. My name is Jonathan Youngkin, and I am the first vice president of the SFT. The SFT had nearly one-third of our membership respond to our survey on cellphones. And while the board has access to all the results, I would like to touch on a few details tonight. I'll be personally addressing the results from the elementary SFT members. First, in regards to the effects of cellphones on our students. Ninety percent of elementary SFT members stated that access to cellphones have a negative effect on student learning, student social interactions, student behavioral issues, including cyberbullying of students and staff. Second, in regards to the current policy and its enforcement. When shown the current district policy and asked if they had known what it said, only forty percent of elementary teachers reported that they had known the wording of the policy. When asked about the enforcement of the policy in their school, almost two-thirds of elementary SFT members reported that the policy either almost always or sometimes was enforced. When asked if the policy itself was the issue, or was it just a lack of enforcement, the majority of elementary teachers believe that the policy is lacking and therefore contributes to issues in their buildings. Finally, when asked in what situation students should have access to their phones during the school day, over at seventy-five percent said at no time. The one exception was that forty-three percent said that phones could be used in cases of emergency. The last thing I just wanted to mention was that it is my understanding that some of our staff that work in Schenectady but live in other districts have sent a few statements to the board regarding how well they perceived cellphone policies in those districts working, and I think that they were overwhelmingly positive about those cellphone policies in the other districts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we would like to welcome Mike Silvestri.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Cotto, Mike Silvestri, Schenectady Federation of Teachers, President. I will start off by following John Youngkin's statements with the data that was received from our secondary members. Ninety-five to almost a hundred percent of secondary SFT members stated access to cellphones has a negative effect on students' learning, social interactions, the behavioral issues, and again, including cyberbullying of staff and other students. Of that, nearly seventy-five percent stated the effect was actually extremely negative on learning. And at the middle school, two-thirds stated it was extremely negative in regards to behavioral issues, again, including cyberbullying of other students and staff. Overall, with this data, I feel very confident, saying SFT membership very much believe that access to cellphones for students in schools is detrimental to their learning and their social-emotional well-being. Regarding the current policy and its enforcement, again, when secondary staff were given the policy, a third of them reported that they had not known what it said until they read it when we shared it with them. Two-thirds reported that enforcement at the secondary level was either almost never or never, and seventy-five percent that believe that the current policy is lacking and therefore is contributing to issues. So again, overall, I feel very confident, saying SFT members believe we are not doing all that we can as a district to protect students from the detrimental issues caused by phones. When they asked when students should have access, two-thirds said basically never, except for at the high school. Two-thirds said maybe during lunch. So there was a difference there at the high school only. So if we as a district truly want to improve the ability of our students to learn in school and improve their social-emotional well-being, the following changes need to be made to the policy. P through twelve, no personal electronic device shall be in the hands of a student during the school day, except as to be stowed away, or if it is allowed by a 504 or IEP. With the possible exception of, again, of lunch, nine through twelve. If a student has a personal electronic device in their hands, aside from stowing it, they should be directed to their administrator, and they should only be allowed to return to class once that has been confiscated. That personal electronic device should stay in the administrative office till the end of the day. And of course, if this becomes a multiple issue, the code of conduct could kick in for other responses. Then we as a district must choose to hold each other all accountable to enforce this policy. We must all hold each other accountable. For the board's part, we are asking to make sure the human union is aware if these changes are made, to make clear to all district staff that it is the board's expectation that this new policy be followed and that enforcement will be supported. And finally, please request, if these changes are made, and even if they aren't, a monthly report on the cellphone policy to determine whether or not the policy is currently working or other changes, like yonder pouches, should be made. Three seconds? I have... Just so you know, an invite was sent out to the board and to the district and also to the administrators in the district, inviting them to a NICEIT... I'm going to lose the words. Whatever it's called. Nine twenty, we're having a meeting. NICEIT is holding a meeting on cellphone issues throughout the state, and you're all invited. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That concludes our public comments, and we will continue with our agenda. So the first one is establishment of tax rates. So Chief Financial Officer Terry will briefly review the proposed tax rates, provide insights, and address any questions or concerns we may have.
Are there any questions? Well, after we had... At the last meeting, you passed the tax rates that's required by New York State, but then we had a big adjustment to the assessment from the city of Schenectady that was retroactive back to July first. So as a result, that adjustment affected our tax rates that were approved at the last meeting. So we've sent the new updated rates to you, which will reduce the tax rate on the bills, and all the bills that have been sent out are with the new adjusted tax rate that you're going to approve tonight.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions? Board member Kathy?
So the tax bills that we currently have had for about a week, two weeks.
Are correct.
Those are correct.
Yes.
So no one got incorrect bills?
No. Everybody got correct bills with the tax rate you're going to approve tonight.
Okay, so what was the adjustment at the city level?
The city level had a pilot for, I believe, the ALCO down by the casino, and it went back on the tax rules for the current year. As you can imagine, in the value of that property, adding that to the tax rule affected the assessment of all the cities. So by adding that, it was retroactive to the actual tax rule of July first, which was, you know, within the deadline. So that's why we did the adjustment. We got notified like at the day of the meeting, so we didn't have time to make that adjustment.
Any other questions from the board, from board members? Thank you. We will now have a resolution to consider for approval. The establishment of the tax rates, a revised establishment of the tax rates. I'll accept a motion to approve the revised establishment of tax rates. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Do we all know it's the tax rates? Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you, board member Jamaica. Any discussions, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to accept the revised establishment of tax rates resolution carries. We will now transition to service agreement with Common Lit. Before we proceed with the vote on the resolution, Assistant Director of ELL and Library Rebecca Gleason will give an overview. So Dr. Chisholm will give an overview of the BOE-approved program. So we approved this several... A while ago.
Yes.
On Common Lit. So welcome, Dr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Board President.
Good evening.
Superintendent Cotto, Board President O'Leary, board members, community.
So Common Lit is our literacy or ELA program for grades six through eight. It is a program research-based that we've already been using in the district. This is just a continuation of online resource and services for our students, and the reason why this is happening for September is we do not want to have a gap in online resources for the teachers to have access to for the first day of school. So it was important for us to have it placed on this agenda for contractual purposes so that we don't have a lapse in teachers' access to the online resource to support classrooms.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. Do board members have any questions? We will now vote on the service agreement resolution with Common Lit.
I guess I have one.
You do? Board member Kathy?
Is it possible to do it for more than one year at a time, or do you want to only do it for a year at a time?
That's something that we... It depends. For this, it's only been one year at a time. We have done it for extended services, but we don't like to try to keep ourselves locked in necessarily for the online resources as opposed to...
I understand that, but I mean, it doesn't seem as if two years might be inappropriate and we would avoid these.
We can definitely ask that question.
Look into that, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'll accept a motion to approve the service agreement resolution with Common Lit. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President, and second?
Second.
Board member Alexandria, thank you. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the service agreement resolution with Common Lit carries. The next order of business are the consent agenda items. The consent agenda includes items to be approved by consent, and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member if they wish to do so. Would anyone like a consent agenda item removed?
Just one, is the NISBA voting delegate? Just, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, sure. Okay. So at the request of board member Kathy, we are removing... We're removing seven from the consent agenda item, and we'll vote on it separately after the consent agenda. So at this time, Resolutions five through ten C, with the exception of seven, is presented for approval. I'll accept a motion to approve these items with the exception of number seven, which is the designation of the annual NISBA convention. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, board member Amanda, second?
Second.
Thank you, VP. And we will have, well, actually, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion to accept Resolutions five through ten C, with the exception of seven, carries. Now we will go back to Resolution... To Resolution seven, and board member Kathy?
Just a quick question. I have no problem with having Vivian appointed as delegate for the NISBA business meeting, but I thought that we usually had an alternate appoint or named so that if indeed Vivian couldn't serve as it got closer, and there is a deadline for when you could substitute the alternate, that all we would have to do is put that in. I am not positive about that, but I wanted to just mention it.
I don't believe we did that last year, but I can look into it. No worries. I can look into it, and then I'll let the board know.
That's what I wanted to bring up, because sometimes it happens that, you know, you won't be able to do it October tenth, and we need to have the person specify.
No worry. I'll look into it, and then I'll let the board know. Okay?
Thank you. That was my only, and I'll move it.
Okay, thank you, board member Kathy. So we will now vote on Resolution seven. Kathy, board member Kathy made the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Amanda. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries that Vivian Parsons will be our delegate for the annual NISBA convention this year. Congratulations. You're going to love it. It's a learning experience. It really is. Okay, so tonight, we have two additional walk-on resolutions. One for the facilities license agreement with Schenectady Community College, and another for the textbook buyback and discard process. I make a motion to waive the forty-eight-hour rule for the facilities license agreements with Schenectady Community College. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, thank you, board member Jamaica, and thank you, Vice President Nohalani. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to waive the forty-eight-hour rule for the walk-on resolution specifically for the license agreement with Schenectady Community College. I'll accept the motion to approve the facilities license agreement with Schenectady Community College. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, so thank you, board member Kathy, and was that Amanda?
Yes.
Second, board member Amanda, thank you. Any further discussions, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the facilities license agreement with SECCC carries. All right. Okay, so the next resolution is unused textbook buyback and discard process. And I know on the resolution it says "discarment," and Martha did say to me that is actually a word. So we're going to go with Martha. So I make a motion to waive the forty-eight-hour rule for the unused textbook buyback and discard process. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, board member. Vice President Nohalani, second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Alexandria. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to waive the forty-eight-hour rule for the walk-on resolution. I'll accept a motion to approve the unused textbook buyback and discard process. May I have a motion?
So you don't like the word "discarment"?
So don't you notice that, right? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, board member Amanda, second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Vivian. Any further discussions, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the unused textbook buyback and discard process carries. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are now transitioning to the board discussion portion of the meeting. As a reminder, all board members were provided with the structure, materials, and information ahead of tonight's meeting, both by the district and in the board president's weekly updates to help prepare us for the discussion. The board president and board clerk have shared written public comments received, as was mentioned by the vice president and the president of SFT, with community and staff members, and to the entire board, specifically four that were sent via Let's Talk or by mail, three addressing self... three addressing cell phone policy, and one concerning the screening security systems. While it's not customary or required due to the nature of the topics, the documents have been attached early to the board docs agenda under public comments for everyone's review. So it's actually up on board docs today, so you can all take a look at it if you want to. Additionally, additionally, I will remind the board of the agreed-upon agreements from the '24 school year. So we agree to maintain a focus on what's best for all of our students. One mic, one voice. Ensuring a safe space for all views to be expressed. Treating each other and staff respectfully. More specifically, showing kindness, courtesy, and politeness. Making a commitment to effective deliberation. Each one listening and considering with an open mind, while others are allowed to express points of view even if one disagrees. As we move forward with our discussions tonight and tomorrow, I want to emphasize that it is important for every board member to have the opportunity to ask questions and share their thoughts. This ensures that our deliberations are thorough and inclusive. I encourage each of you to contribute, and I ask that we remain mindful of giving everyone a chance to speak. We will use the free-flowing process for discussion, as we did for both the grading policy and the vaping policy. However, if the discussion goes off track, I will enforce our three questions at a time per board member protocol. Tonight, we will engage in two critical conversations around the personal electronic device, and we'll be using the word "cellphones" probably, in schools. And we will begin tonight to discuss school culture and climate, safety, and the security screening system. We will continue the conversation tomorrow as well. First, thank you to the students, families, and staff, and community members for sharing your thoughts, feedback, and insight about the cellphone policy topic. The two topics, as we know as a board too, is a tough topic, and so is the screening system. So we truly appreciate it, but we, we know, and we feel that this is an important topic to have a conversation in front of all of you. I do want to welcome the representatives of our school culture and safety staff for attending our board meeting today. I would like to take a moment to extend our gratitude to a special group of individuals who are here representing. Christine, and if you don't mind, just raising your hand. And I apologize, apologize if I mispronounce your name, so I just might say your first name and the last initial. Christine E. apparently is on. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Brennan V., thank you for being here. He's a community school coordinator. Thank you. Thank you. Ian Farmer. I don't see him yet. So when he comes in, all of us will look at him and say, "Welcome." Kayla A., thank you for being here. Kayla, she's a supervisor of community schools. I don't see Al, but we will do the same thing when he walks in. He's the IEE, the Innovation Equity and...
Engagement.
Engagement. I was testing all of you. Specialists. Anthony A., attendance and engagement specialist. Thank you. Welcome. Jamie G., welcome. Thank you for being here. She's the attendance and engagement specialist. Sabethany Rios. Sorry, I had to say the last name. She's a restorative practice specialist. Welcome, and thank you for being here. Jonah?
Jana.
Jana? Thank you. Jana, thank you for being here. She's a restorative practice specialist. Thank you. Thank you. And Damani Farley. He is the...
Coordinator of Family Opportunities Research.
We had to have him saying. Welcome, Damani. Thank you for being here. So today, again, we are fortunate to have several Schenacti school staff members.
Marvin.
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 Marvin, you know, we have to save like the big one. So Marvin is also here, and he's a safety op.
Supervisor.
Supervisor. We're the safety officers. Welcome, and thank you for being here, Marvin. Thank you. Okay, so today, we are fortunate to have the Schenacti City School staff, experts in school culture and climate present, and we will be introducing them in a few minutes. Their expertise is invaluable. Seriously, very invaluable. And we strive to create the best possible educational experience for all of our students. Their insights of school culture and climate will be instrumental as we continue to develop and implement strategies that support our school's mission. We appreciate their willingness, all your willingness, to share your, their knowledge, your knowledge, and provide guidance to our board. I do want to start now with our PED. I'm going to call it PED, the Personal Electronic Devices or Cellphone Policy. But before we do that, we do have an important topic on our agenda that has generated much discussion and interest among our students, parents, and family. And as all of you know, it's the cellphone policy. As technology continues to evolve rapidly, our personal electronic devices policy needs to reflect both the advancements in technology and our commitment to maintaining a productive and focused learning environment. The goal of today's discussion is to review our current policy, explore potential adjustments, and ensure that any changes we consider, or maybe not, are in the best interest of our students' educational experiences and overall school environment. To guide us through this discussion, we will be examining the current policy's impact, hearing from various stakeholders, and that will begin with Principal Green in a few minutes, and evaluating best practices from other districts. For example, Skahery, and all of you do have Skahery's policy in front of you. There's only one, but you do have one. We aim to strive a balance that respects students' needs while supporting our educational objectives. I'd like to introduce Principal Green, who will be discussing the proposed cellphone process and policy. He and the high school staff have developed ideas and recommendations that they believe will specifically help address cellphone use at the high school. Principal Green will first provide us with an overview of their thoughts to help focus our conversation. So welcome, Principal Green.
So I just, it's a policy, or the board has the policy. This is a building expectation, right? That, that we implemented last year. This is a topic that is cross-country, right? This is not anything new for our district. I've visited schools around the capital district to see, hey, what are you doing? How's that working? I've, teachers have provided numerous articles for me. I've seen numerous articles. I've been to Chicago School District, Nashville School District. You know, what is everyone doing nationally, right? And this is something that we're all struggling with and trying to find, you know, a balance to a policy and/or expectations. The advancement of technology, as you said, is, is great. I love technology, but it's also a concern when it's not used properly. And, you know, cell phones are now, and what is the next thing five years from now? So I, I think having these discussions and collaborating on it is extremely important. So our, our building expectations that we implemented last year is, is a collaborative piece, right? Like, I hear, you know, enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. I think of a tiered approach, right? There's the tier-one approach in the classroom with classroom management and behavioral management, right? And then there's that tiered approach where an administrator gets involved and gets parents involved. And then there's that tier-three approach where, you know, it, those, those two tiers aren't working, and something else has to come together, like an SBST, or, you know, family-parent conference with administrators, right? So we always think about, you know, what is, what is a way that keeps our students engaged, keeps the devices out of their hands, but doesn't harm them through, you know, our last resort, which is suspensions, right? That, that is the biggest thing, and that's including in-school suspension. So when we think about a tiered building expectations, we also think about a tiered response to violations of a, of a policy, right? So, you know, we built that from, from thinking about that. This is an updated version of last year's as we look at changes that we need to make. Last year, we purchased cellphone boxes for every classroom. I'm going to throw a number out, maybe 127, something like that, right? Every classroom has a 30-case see-through, right? We were very mindful, like, this is an addiction for some of our students. Let's, let's be honest, right? After, after COVID, or during COVID, a lot of our young people, including our adults too, like, this is not just a young person issue. Like, we became addicted to cellphone use, to social media, right? This is the evolution of humans. I don't know where that's going, but this is the beginning of something that we may see in effect on 100 years from now. So coming back from COVID has been really hard when you've had a young person who has had a device in their hands for a year and a half, without those expectations of being in a classroom. So we designed this last year, provided cases for every classroom, and, and tried, tried to work with and collaborate with classroom teachers as to not take that authority away to be able to manage. And, and I'll be more clear about that. There were some of our classrooms' courses that relied on cell phones for taking pictures, our photography class. So we said, all right, let's update cameras and buy new cameras, so that's not an issue. Some, some classes have expectations that it's not a problem, but when it is, it's a problem. So we started with, you know, allowing teachers the autonomy to say, it's not an issue in my classroom, but if it is, here are the steps. I'm going to ask you, please put your cellphone in the box, right? Well, first, I'm going to say, Dr. Colville, you know, we've got some important stuff here. I can't have you miss this. Like, I saw you on your cellphone. Put it away, right? That progression, building that relationship, which we should have that community in our classroom to be able to do that. We know that that doesn't always work. So the next step is, you know, this is the second or third time I've asked you to put it away. How about you put it in the case? The case is clear. You can see it. No one's going to take it. It's clear. It's got a lock. Everyone had a key for it, or all teachers had a key. So, you know, that anxiety of, oh, my God, you have my device. That's everything to some of our young people. But now you can see it. It's in there. You get it back after class. So that, that's that tier, that classroom-tier approach. Now, when that doesn't work, as sometimes it doesn't, I'm not going to give my device up because, one, my mom paid for this, or my dad, or somebody paid for this. It's expensive. I'm not giving it up, right? So now we're in violation of the policy. So that, that should trigger a referral to that, that student's administrator, to where that administrator should be calling home, having that discussion with a parent. Here are the steps that happened prior to them being sent to me. They are still refusing. Let's, I'm going to take the cellphone, and I'm going to keep it in the administrative cellphone box, which is a box of 60 slots, right? So each leadership community principal also has those boxes in their office. That step then says, you don't get the phone back until the end of the day, right? Because you already had, a teacher has already built that relationship and said, can you put it away once or twice? Then the offer was to put it in the case in the classroom until the end of the period, right? Giving that option to say, end of the period, you get it back. Now it's the point where it's become an issue or repetitive. So now the, the principal, leadership community principal holds it in their locked box, and at the end of the day, that student would be able to come to that office, get that cellphone, and return it. Now, there's always communication with parents around the why. Academics is first. Really stressing that, yes, this is, and it can be, and it is a distraction in the classroom. A lot of our young people who are on our devices during class, not all, right? We have a lot of responsible young people that are making the right decisions. Like, I need to be clear about that. There are 100, or 2,500 students, roughly, right? I almost guarantee 95% of them have a cellphone. So I, I, this is not a blanket statement that all students, but we are seeing the effects of cellphone uses in classroom and then disruptions. For whatever reason, emergencies from parents, text messages. So it is an issue that we've seen, especially with the bullying piece, recording of fights, which we all have policy in place, approved through our character code of conduct. And this here is really outlining, you know, what we attempt to do at the building. Now, let me be clear. This is only as effective as the stakeholders' fidelity to holding themselves accountable for doing this, from tier-one all the way through, right? From our classroom teachers to our administrators. If we, and I say "we" because it's a collective whole, it's our entire building. If we are not all on the same page, doing the same thing, then, then it's not going to work. When I think about, as I visited most recently Troy, Troy is thinking about, or they are implementing yonder pouches, right? And I think about, like, what is it that those, you know, what's the capacity of that as opposed to this? Well, that kind of eliminates some of that gray area. But then I think there's always some gray area to something. Nothing's ever perfect, right? So this is what we've implemented. We've met as early as this week around how do we look at this? How do we improve this? How do we better support? But again, it's that collaboration between all stakeholders holders into, in the building with the fidelity piece. It's, a chain is only as strong as its weakest link, right? Something like that. I always mess those up. But, you know, if, if there are individuals in classrooms that don't necessarily have a problem with the compliance of the cellphone policy, and, you know, hey, you've got a five-minute break, or we're going to do a cahoot, jump on this, and now we've provided Chromebooks in every classroom. So there should be no need for it now. In the past, there has been, but there needs to be a, a building-wide, in, in any building, not just Schenacti High School, in any building, there needs to be a collaborative effort to maintain the expectations throughout. Which I think when we talk about options of like yonder pouches, that takes away that gray area right off the rip. You come in, you put it in, and that's that. We haven't seen, you know, we'll hear, I think, you talked about Skahery. I met with that principal two years ago down at the safety conference, who, he was implementing it that year. So I'd love to see data from someone who has had it for a while. Someone, some building or district that's comparable to 2,500 students as opposed to 600, 500, 300. Troy, I think, right now is about 1,200, so that's the closest to, to what our building reflects. But by, by no means, cell phones are a problem. And I left one piece out that's extremely important, right? I talk about stakeholders, teachers, and administrators, parents, and guardians. It's a huge support when we have them in our corner and understanding the why. Just as I speak to staff and students, everything is about the why. Young people struggle sometimes with learning because they don't understand the why. I think about when my mom used to tell me, "Do this", and I would always say, "Well, why?" "Well, because I'm the adult and you're the kid." I'm like, "But, Mom, that's not the answer." All I'm looking for is the why, and even whether I agree to it or not, like, okay, now I know the why. So when we help parents understand, like, this is your baby's education, and, and this is greatly affecting, then that collaborative piece between school and community and family is, is, you know, will help ensure that we have some movement on cell phones. And again, this is not the answer, and I always tell our young people, no one's perfect, and this is certainly not perfect. All right? And I don't know what is, but I love that we are having this conversation, and it needs to be collaborative, and we need to make the right best choice for our young people.
Thank you, Principal. I appreciate it.
Any questions about this, or?
Board member Kathy? In your travels to the various, various other districts, how did they handle medical usage of cell phones? For example, I think, I, my understanding is there are apps, for example, that are used for young, not just young people, but for people to monitor diabetes, sugar levels, and so forth. And, and I, the studies that, that I've looked at, not studies so much, but, but the cases. I was just at a conference this weekend, had several conversations. Medical has been exempted, but I don't know exactly how it works. So you didn't have any conversation about that?
Yeah, no, I, I, that's the first, I mean, I would say the nurse would be, but I mean, those exemptions, I heard, I think Mike talked about exemptions for students with IEDs and 504s. That would be sort of a 504.
And that might be, that might be that case. Might be that case. And the second question I had in relation to that, what was the policy at the other districts that you looked at with regard to the staff, the teachers? Uh, I had a conversation, as I said, this past weekend, one school district from around here. Uh, they, their teachers put their cellphones in a pouch as well.
Yep.
The only difference is that instead of the, um, slide to open them up, or the, you know, that, they, theirs are, um, sealed or closed with Velcro, so that they can get to them more quickly for emergencies.
So, there was, it was a varied response. Some, some had, uh, some were investigating the yonder pouches. Um, some had as simple as the head, the thing that hangs on the door, the shoe rack. Kids would put that in there, that, I believe that was, uh, a Chicago school district. Um, that's when we first thought about getting the boxes, they had the shoeboxes, so they would, yeah. I walked in, I, I, and I walk, I walked up to my first student, I said, I don't see any cellphones in the thing. He goes, yeah, because sometimes they allow us to use it, and he's got it here, so I'm like, oh, okay, so that's not that, that effective, right? So, ranging from that to, um, one school said, uh, they, they leave it to each individual teacher, um, to whether or not they utilize them, allow breaks, um, to a total ban. Um, and I spoke with a North Carolina principal, um, last week at the Avid Conference in Baltimore, and it was a total ban on cellphones in the school.
Rep Joyce? Uh, I just had a question on, I noticed that you implemented the policy this one last year. Were you able to measure the effectiveness or even feedback of the policy? And how maybe the students or teachers' opinion on how to shape it?
So, that's a great question, Joyce, I love it, that's why you're here. Um, so, the effectiveness, a- as we pulled the data this summer, um, it was really hard to determine, because as we pulled the referrals for cellphones, there was about a hundred and eighteen referrals, right? Six were from admin and two were from secretaries, leaving a hundred and ten from teacher, which is like, not even one percent of the amount of classrooms we have. So, it was hard to determine that, and sometimes it was coded, maybe, uh, refusing to follow school, school directives. So, it was hard to pull, like, how many infractions other than those hundred and eighteen that came out of cellphones? Uh, but to answer your question around feedback from students, um, we, I mean, outside from the surveys that we sent out, we haven't directly said, hey, does this policy work for you, right? Because, a- and I can't assume what young people are saying, but they're the ones that want the cellphones in their hands, and not all. Like, some have said, we need, we need a ban on cellphones. There are kids that come up, there are young people that, as Bradout said, we don't want them in school. So, but that's a great question as far as, like, we should get input from our young people. And I think the, the, the survey went out to young people as well. So, I haven't seen the results on that survey yet.
Uh, I have one last question. In the event of maybe damages to the phone, because, you know, accidents happen on the way to the box, who would be liable for the damages?
Joyce, that is one of our main concerns, right, is liability, because we're talking anywhere from five hundred to a two thousand dollar phone, right? So, in, in the district's policy, it is very clear that the, the owner of the phone is, it's, it's on them, right? So, if the policy says no cellphones in school and you bring it, then you're choosing to say, I'm gonna disregard that policy, meaning if it breaks, then it's, you know, we spent a lot of time searching for cellphones in school, right? Even lost or stolen, um, I didn't even mention the time spent on that, not you.
It was one time.
No, I didn't even know that. I do remember that, but I wasn't referring to you.
Okay, thank you, Student Board Representative Joyce, and Board Member Vivian?
Hi.
Hi.
So, from what I understand, the expectations on not having cellphones in the class has been implemented, implemented starting last year.
Yes.
So, what I would like to know is, to piggyback off of, on Board Rep Joyce, um, Student Rep Joyce, the success rate, but how do we quantify that? So, I understand that not that many referrals were, were produced, so that means that not that many referrals were sent, but still an issue, right? So, that to me indicates that there's overall frustration amongst the faculty. They're just done with trying to enforce said policy. Um, from what I gathered from the survey, uh, some teachers indicated that they did not feel like they had the support of administration to enforce said cellphone policy. So, what I would actually like to see is, on the report cards and the, um, interim reports, teachers have a comment that says, your student would do a whole lot better in my class if they would put their cellphone away. So, what I would actually like to see is data that shows of this, the students that we have from grade six through twelve, how many of them, every quarter, have at least one class in that quarter where that comment was added by a teacher? And then I would like to see the correlation between that comment and their grade and their test scores. So, in quarter one, if they had that comment, and then they had, and they had a C. And they had that comment again in quarter two, did they still have a C, or did they have a D, did they have an F? That's, I think, if we're going to still insist on collecting data, I feel like that's the more targeted data that we should be trying to collect before making a decision.
Yeah, that, that's correlated, then you can see the correlation between cellphones and academics.
Thank you, Board Member.
And, and not just that, and to, to your point, not just academics, but the correlation between cellphones bullying, cellphones fights, I mean, then we're digging into social media as well.
Thank you, thank you. Board Member Jamaica?
Um, hello, Mr. Green.
Hello, Ms. Maza.
Uh, nope, Ms. Maza's a tenth grade English teacher at the high school, that's not my name, that's not my name. Um, first, first, Jamaica. First is, um, correlation doesn't mean causation. We talk about data, we talk about research, we need to be real about it. Just because one thing happened and another thing happened, that doesn't mean those things are actually interrelated. Um, but since we're talking about reports, and I appreciated that Mike had already brought up, like, there should be a report about, like, how this is, is happening. We have tiered interventions. The report that you're able to run that says how many students were referred because of their cellphone, and there's discrepancies about that, are we also getting the report about what intervention happened? And how many of them happened towards that escalation? Since what it says directly on our, um, code of conduct is, these responses and interventions aim to teach and correct behavior and promote the practice of pro-social behaviors, self-discipline and healthy well-being. Teachers are encouraged to try a variety of teaching and classroom management strategies. Um, because we've been, I think, very clear, it's not just all on the kids. We are responsible for fostering that environment and that relationship, which is talked about very often. Uh, so, a referral does not tell the whole story. And if there's going to be a report, um, we're talking about whether or not our policy is working. We don't yet have the data to say whether or not the policy we currently have is working or not. If we're not able to pull a full report, um, if people are not coding the, the discipline, or, which shouldn't be discipline, but the interventions to correct, the resolutions to correct the behavior. So, I, I feel like we're a little bit cart before the horse. If we've not yet been able to take a full assessment inside our district to say, hey, when a child is, you know, caught with their cellphone out, how many different interventions were utilized or tried? Um, and, I mean, it's a lot of work. I'm not, I, I understand, what I'm saying sounds like a lot of work, but we're committed to building up our children and not simply saying, do what I said.
So, so I agree, like, do what I said, because I'm the adult and you're the child, absolutely. So, everything we do is that tiered approach around teaching the skill. Because we know, and I'll say, in-school or suspension does not teach you a student directly. It's not, it's not related to the issue. So, we had just had this conversation or admin meeting around, how do we teach those skills, those lagging skills? How do we teach the why? Why is it important to put it away? Why is it this, why is it that? And you, you hit it, right, it's capacity, right? Capacity with twenty-six hundred kids, and, and how do we reach that level? And there is data, so with, with those referrals that were inputted, like, referrals don't necessarily mean, like, it's not always attached to a consequence that is detrimental like ISS, but it's to track data, right? So, every one of those are attached to a resolution. Whether it's a phone call home, whether it's a conversation with the administrator, whether or not RP was involved. Um, just as a, restore the practice.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sorry, I know acronyms, I'm lucky to even know what RP is. Um, so, just, again, as early as this morning, we, we are set, and last week, we met with our RP team around what are those tiered approaches we can do first, right? With vaping, with cellphones, with leaving school grounds, like, first it's this, you know, contact a parent. Let's get them on board. Next is like, you go to a group, right? Whether it's an assembly or a group, or whether it's one-on-one with restorative practice folks, right? So, it's that tiered approach. Then, even before, it's like SBST, like, bring in, bring in parents and community members. Like, how do we resolve this without being detrimental by suspending students and losing that academic piece?
And then a, a follow-up, um, because one of my concerns, I have many, um, is that we, we center cellphones and technology, and we had this conversation about AI as well, as instantly bad, right? As opposed to the possibility of a tool for learning, right? Um, with AI, there was a huge conversation, the, the conference that we were at, about how AI can be used as a tool for learning, it's not the big bad thing. It doesn't mean every kid is cheating just because they know how to use AI. But it's about our responsibility to teach responsibility in how to use ChatGPT and things like that. We have an opportunity to teach students how to responsibly use their personal electronic devices, whether they be smartphones or anything else. And teachers then have an opportunity to engage our students through the use of that technology, to in which they are going to need in their adulthood. How many people in this room right now do not have a cellphone? Yep, that's right.
I got two.
This, this, see, and so, we, we talk about building leaders for the future.
Yep.
And then we're saying, we're gonna ban this thing from you, you just can't use it. As opposed to looking for opportunities to engage them with those devices. Like, who can do a, a, a Google search and have the most reliable facts about Dennis Green? And make it a contest, you like contests? And see who comes up with the, the best facts and things like that, to teach them how to responsibly use their phones. Um, be- because it is a technological tool that is not going away, and this is a conversation that's been happening for more than thirty years. This conversation happened when there were beepers and pagers. Some of us in this room.
You, you take, so, Jamaica, you take the words out of my mouth. That is, that is why I'm, I'm literally in the middle, because I'm a technol- a, a technology person. Like, I love technology, I see the benefits of it, right? So, I'm always on that fence of, I don't like the word ban. Ban has never happened, never worked in any part of our country, anytime we try to ban something.
Didn't happen.
Right, and, and I use the AI, I went to an IB conference in Washington DC, and they said, if we're not teaching kids how to use AI, then we're, our kids are gonna be behind in, in, in the real world.
And some of our kids, their electronic devices are their computers. That is how they're going to be using that technology.
Right, so, we've resolved some of that by ensuring that every classroom has a Chromebook cart with Chromebooks. But it is, right, we ask students, check your schedule on your phones. Like, we have an app for parents and students. So, I struggle with it too, but I certainly recognize the issues around academics. And I agree, there needs to be some engagement and, and teaching young, young people how to be responsible in collaboration with our community and parents as well.
Board Member Vivian?
How many students, um, grade six through twelve have suffered cyberbullying in any form that we know about? And how many suffered cyberbullying in one form or another that we dumped? And when this issue is addressed, and we have an upset parent trying to understand how this happened to their child, our response is, well, we're dealing with it in a tiered approach. And we have no way of saying to that parent, we did everything we could to mitigate the possibility of this happening in the first place. Um, you can't put the toothpaste back in the tube once it's out. How many fights have been recorded and posted to humiliate the person that was being called? How many explicit photos were airdropped during classroom hours? Um, how many social media posts bullying another student is going on in the classroom during the school hours? At some point, if we are going to have expectations of our students, we're here to learn, we're raising scholars, we're here to be respectful, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we create the environment that is conducive to those expectations being supported. Um, if we are going to have unlimited access to a distraction and bullying tool all the time, it kind of cancels out what it is that we are saying that we expect of our students. So, I understand the trepidation behind and outright ban. I get it, I'm with you, I'm somewhat in the middle myself. However, I feel like at what point, at what point do we say, there's more than one issue surrounding the cellphones? Not only is bullying an issue, and it's, I feel like, again, I would not be surprised if the issue was deeper than we even know, because it doesn't always get reported. But in addition to that, when you have students who struggle with concentration, focus, um, whether they have ADHD that's diagnosed or undiagnosed, treated or untreated, whether they're neurodivergent in general, if they do not, if we are not providing them with the structure and the border that they need to be able to succeed, because they have unmitigated access to a handheld distraction, we are taking a part in setting them up for failure instead of setting them up for success.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian.
I don't disagree. I mean, it's, it's, it's hardest, one of the hardest things in our academic career right now is, is dealing with this issue.
Board Member Kathy?
Let me explore another side of things that I've heard, and that is the, um, need for parents or guardians or whomever to get in touch with their young person, uh, and so on. Could you comment on the response in the office? I mean, what I've been told is, you know, twenty-five years ago, they called the office and said, I need to talk to so-and-so and so-and-so, or, you know, how, how set is the office for handling that kind of thing? Should that be required, and how do you get in touch with the student in the room, and so on and so forth?
I, I mean, we're, I think we're in a different age right now, where communication's instant. So, to say, call the office, as opposed to, I can text my child? Like, hey, pick up your little brother at two-thirty, you gotta leave early? Like, that's what we're up against, like, that instant, whether it's instant gratification, instant communication, um, sure, call, call the office, we'll, I mean, that's what we want, but we're up against, we let something out of the box, and it's, it's almost like AI. We let AI out, there's no pulling it back in. There's no saying, call the office, get on hold, press one for your leadership community, wait a minute, let me get your child down to the office, right? That's what we're up against, that instant ability to communicate.
Okay, but in connection with that, I mean, do you see that as a, as a problem, as a, as a possible solution to they're not having the phones, I mean, you know?
I mean, sure, it's, it's one solution, call, call the office.
Okay, so we could be more creative, we could think of something else. One of the things I've heard is that the, that actually, because the phones are in individual's hands, in the event of an emergency, oftentimes, students are not listening to the people they need to be listening to, namely, faculty and, and administrators and so forth, and that causes bigger problems.
Sure, yeah.
And is part of the reason that so many guardians, parents, et cetera, have accepted the fact that we need to, to not have them available in students' hands.
And, and on the other hand, I've heard from parents around, if there is, is an emergency, I wanna be able to get ahold of my child immediately, right? We've heard the horror stories.
But they may not be listening to who they need to be listening to.
Right, but we gotta listen to everyone, right?
No, I meant, I meant the students might not be listening to them, safe.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, just one quick question, based on something that Kathy asked. All the classrooms have phones in them, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do they have direct lines?
Yes.
So, hypothetically, does a parent call directly to the classroom? Okay, I was.
Hold on, let me stop teaching, your mom is following me.
I mean, all of that, so what Kathy said.
Board Member Amanda, and then Board, uh, Student Board Rep Joyce?
It wasn't that long ago, it probably feels like a lot longer, but it, it really wasn't that long ago that parents still had to call the school, and then they had to find out where the, where the student was. So, and I think just, you know, the generation that we're in now, like, those parents, like, experienced that as the process. So, initially, it's probably, and I'm speaking for myself too, like, you said in the beginning, like, we all have a little bit of an addiction to our cellphones. It's, it's true.
How many people have their cellphones down on their table?
I know, I know, I know, right?
Remember our hot notes.
You know, so, I mean, I understand the benefit of it, but the fact that we already have, we've, we've mitigated the problem of needing to use the phones in the classroom. If there is ever like a, you know, some type of lesson that you do need the phones out, and that exception can be made for that point in time.
That creates the gray area, right there.
Well, I mean, there could be a procedure around it, and I don't wanna get into procedure here. But, you know, even just a disclosure submitted to you, like, this day, this class, kid, we're, we're gonna allow the kids to use the phones this day. I don't know. Have some documentation for it. But it was, it wasn't like that long ago that
Twenty-five years you thought was too long.
That, um, you know, that was just the process. So it, I think, you know, to, to sort of like rip the Band-Aid off and kind of make it so there's just no, there's no cellphones during the day. Your kid can bring them to school, sure, but they have to go in the pocket or in the, in the pouch. They have to stay in the locker. We cannot see them at all. You know, like, whatever the policy ends up being, it's gonna be a shock factor for a lot of people upfront. But through the people that I've talked to and the feedback that we've gotten, it was, like, they get used to it. And I think there was even a story I, I read recently about a, a mother who was speaking with her daughter about a cellphone ban that had happened at her school. And at first, it was like uproar. Everyone was like, what the heck is this? And then they realized that no one knew how to talk to each other. Because anytime they had a free second, they were looking at their phone. And lunches were awkward and being in the hall was awkward because no one knew how to con- conversate with anyone. And it was really sad to me, like, to, to read that story and to think that there's kids in our school who don't know how to have, uh, you know, a conversation face-to-face. Or how to handle a potentially slightly awkward situation without, you know, pulling your phone out and being like, oh, anyways, you know, you see this, what's happening on TikTok today? You know, so I think it's, it's a whole combination. It's not just distractions in the classroom. It's, it's, you know, the cyberbullying and, you know, Vivian hit a great point, like, we don't even know the extent and how deep that goes. You know, to some extent, maybe we can quantify what happens in the classroom because you can see it. But there's a lot of things that you just don't know happening. And then the fact that it's making it more difficult for our students to have genuine social interactions with their peers without having it be through a text message. You know, the, there's more that we can do by, you know, reducing access to phones during the day than just making it not a distraction in the classroom. So I, I think in general, you know, for every single person, not just students, like, less phone time is, is better. It just forces you to be, use your brain more, like, just reading. I know you can read on your phone, but it's bad for your eyes, you know? So like, there's just so many benefits to reducing that sort of cellphone time that I, I mean, I think it's a, a good idea.
Thank you, board member Amanda. And student board rep Joyce?
I also wanted to add, to piggyback on what
Amanda, me?
Board member Amanda.
Or Kathy?
Kathy, board member Kathy. Kathy had said, just, how do we also manage the disruption from having to go to the office to take a call or, like, from my classroom per se, if I have to go to the office, the stem office, to take a call for my parent, it's like a couple minutes walk and then I take the call and my mom on the phone for like ten minutes, so I'm gonna pick up. And I'm going back to the classroom and I'm, to another couple minutes to get back to the classroom. And then I'm looking at the lesson and I'm like, where am I right now? What are we talking about? What is going on? And then it's an automatic clock out or an automatic, well, I'll just do another homework. How, how are we gonna deal with that?
So I'm not gonna answer that, but I think what I hear you saying is either one is a disruption.
Yeah.
Instead of getting a text, now you're leaving the classroom.
Yes.
Right, so. I, I can't answer that because you're gonna leave the classroom and go take the call.
And there's other ways to do it besides taking, like, you could, they could take a message.
Deliver a message, yeah.
Yeah, deliver the message. And, I mean, it wasn't, you know, a couple years ago, but it wasn't, you know, thirty years ago either. Like, it, a lot of times, the office would forward the call to the classroom. And I know that is still a disruption, but if it's a quick, hey, I need you to pick your brother up, it's, you know, thirty seconds as opposed to ten minutes. So there's a lot of different options that can obviously be worked out. And I know it's gonna be more work for you to, like, flesh out those details, but it, my point is like
I would be completely against phone calls in the classroom.
I, I'm just saying, no, no, no. I, and I, I was just giving the example that there are ways around it besides sending kids totally outside the classroom.
That's why this, this is important, that this discussion happens, because more brains to solve an issue. And again, this is across our country.
Right.
Board member Kathy?
To, just a point of information, uh, the Burt Hills-Balston Lake ban basically on, on cellphones was just reported on. And, and the point was made that on average, students are receiving sixty-five communications per day on their phone, text messages, emails, uh, looking for Google or whatever. They're not being called to the office sixty-five times.
Right, yeah, no, absolutely, a hundred percent.
And that's, that's, that's the difference we have here.
Thank you, board member Kathy. Sorry, student board rep Joyce?
I had a question on the enforcement. So you said you had this policy last year. I just had a question on how the enforcement was. What was the feedback you got from that? Or how do we manage enforcement? Because it's also, it's like, if you see the cellphone, you take it. But students will just ask to use the bathroom to use their cellphone? Maybe higher or maybe like teachers maybe don't enforce it as much as they should? Or it's just like, I don't wanna deal with it, so I'm not gonna even talk about it?
So, so you're answering your question? So, so the enforcement, right? Again, it's, we, we try that tiered approach. We don't wanna hurt a young person more by removing them from class when they already have those distractions. But if they're distraction, distracting others by doing, maybe playing music, talking, like, you, you've seen it probably? FaceTime in the middle of the classroom, right? That's a different, that's a different, um, conversation than, you know, having your cellphone out or receiving a text, right? TikToking, that's a different conversation than, than the other.
Board member Vivian?
I'm going back through, um, expectations and procedures. And I gotta say, it's, there's a lot, I know you mentioned the importance of having gray areas, but this is a lot of gray area. Like, this is a whole Green Bay and Washington gray area for, for cellphone use. And I think that consistency, especially when we're dealing with our children, consistency is so key. And we've even had it brought out today. There is no consistency from one classroom to the next. So students don't know what to expect from one classroom to the next, and that breeds chaos. So I just don't see the benefit of having too much gray and there's no consistency in enforcement. And listen, classroom management is also very important, but classroom management may not always be a strong suit for a teacher. Maybe they're just stronger in teaching the material than they are in necessarily managing the classroom. So this is where the additional support comes in. But how can we expect for them to swim through the gray and manage their classroom when students are used to having so much gray? So for me, back to board member Amanda's point, I feel like there has to be a set, clear and defined standard across the board for everyone, because again, consistency is key, equality is key. Again, having expectations and the support to match those expectations. So every student knows what to expect when they walk in the building and when they leave the building. It doesn't matter what class we go into, this is what is to expect from the admin all the way down. This is what we are expecting for each student and is only for the student's benefit. Whether it's the total ban, whether it's a partial ban, whether it's the pouches or no pouches, we have to have that consistency. Based on the information that we received from those, the surveys, I just don't see where teachers are expressing that there wasn't much consistency with what we've already been implementing. So we do, do we continue to expand what we already have or do we scrap it and come up with something better? Instead of continuing to use something that's not necessarily working to everyone's benefit. And I'm also gathering that with the way that things are currently being done, it's only fostering further frustration for our teachers. Because they don't necessarily feel like they can adequately teach their class or students are completely engaged because all they gotta do is sneak in a text. They're not listening. They're in their phone. Whether a teacher sees it or not, they're in their phone. So again, at what point do we draw a hard line?
Great question.
I, I do have an eye wonder, several eye wonders, because our policy was approved in two thousand and eleven. So we've had thirteen years of this policy. So I, I have a lot of eye wonders, right? So I'm hearing all the comments and, and thoughts of the board. And I'm wondering in all this, and you kind of mentioned it, like, what have we learned in the last several years about how we can implement this efficiently and effectively? So that, because part of the, the concern I hear with this, and I think some of us have seen this, is that people were not, some people were not even aware this policy existed, and we've had it for thirteen years. I mean, this is not to you, I'm just saying in general, we've had it for thirteen years. So my worry, there's several, and even on our end, because one of the things, we're not communicating this effectively. We're not. If people, if the majority of people didn't even know the policy existed, that's a concern. Then my, my wonder is, and you don't have to answer now, is how can we do a better job implementing whatever we decide so that everyone knows? And then the harder part is buy-in. How, and again, rhetorical, you don't have to answer now. But how do we get, gain the buy-in from our entire staff? Because it's not actually just teachers. It's all, I mean, it is teachers, but it's all staff with whatever we decide. Yeah, so, um, so this is, again, just something to, for all of us to reflect on. This is thirteen years. This policy has been, um, in effect. And I think most of us, when I, we felt like, oh, okay, this is good, but it's only as good as it's implemented.
Yeah, I agree.
So I will pause.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Right, that's, it's only as good as fidelity of, of, of the stakeholders.
Yeah, and that fidelity, that's
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the implementation and enforcement, um, and that's another thing, a big thought in my mind too, is, you know, there's a lot of really, really good conversation here, but it's only gonna go as far as it's enforced. So whatever the procedures end up being around whatever policy we end up, whether we change it or, or make a whole new one, it's partial buy-in, but also like how, and I know there's a tiered approach, that's fine. But if it's not enforced the same way across the board, it's just not gonna work. And I don't wanna say like this is a waste of time, but I mean, it's
So with our new, our new character code, code of character conduct and support, cellphones is a one O, a tier, I mean, that is tiered approach. This is based off of that document. So when I hear gray area, I, I wanna dig deeper into that. Because it's, we base it off of what our code of character conduct and support states. Right? So I, I, I mean, maybe it's a, I mean, this is a two-day thing, which is awesome because we're digging into it. But when I hear grade and, and, I mean, our code of conduct is pretty black and white.
And board, okay, board member Amanda and then board member Jamaica?
Um, hold on, now I need to remember, uh, what I was gonna say. Oh, um, one of the things I was surprised to see in the policy was the, how it's different depending on, like, the, the school, like, the grade level. So, um, you know, I think it was K through five was absolutely no cellphones at all. Doesn't matter what time of the day it is. And then I think it was like middle and high school, and I might be wrong, but there was a difference between middle school or elementary school and the high school specifically. So I, I'm in, again, maybe because it was just thirteen years ago and, you know, elementary school kids didn't have cellphones, but now these days they do. Is this an issue that we're seeing in elementary schools? I don't know if you can answer, if there's someone else. Are we seeing in elementary schools too, or is it primarily like middle school and high school?
Christine?
Oh, um, well, if, well, uh, to speak for my school, if a child comes in with their cellphone, they automatically drop it off at the office. We put their name on it. And then if they get on the bus or something like that, they come get their phone fifteen minutes before turn, because they automatically know there's no phones in school.
Okay, and what school is that?
Because E word is apparently is on it, okay.
Martin Luther King Elementary.
Okay, okay. So there's, and, uh, now what, do we have, um, you know, can we see like a difference between schools that already are enforcing like the no, the no-phone policy compared to schools that aren't really enforcing it?
I think you, you gotta compare apples with apples though. You can't compare elementary with high school students.
Well, I mean, even through, there's multiple elementary schools though too, like, do we know?
And to be honest, my, um, even for a middle school person, like, I'm a parent, my son goes to elementary school, um, I'm, as I'm thinking as a parent, I don't want a cellphone to get taken because if you're out of thousands of miles walking, talking, and then if something goes on, you call me at three o'clock in the afternoon, and it happens at ten o'clock, why you gonna call me at ten o'clock?
Right.
That's what's killing me about taking the phones away.
And I think that's everyone's like, that's the string that's holding them on to saying like the, the full, you know, no phone, so yeah.
Yeah, so again, I mean, if you're calling a parent and something is going on, then, then it'd be fine for me to get off the phone. And then also it's like, if your child call you before the ministry to call you, then that's a big deal too. It's a problem. I thought, was this just happening to me? It's like, well, you were in school with two hundred other people, while you're calling me and not the principal or the parent reas or, or anybody in the office at that point, to me, that's just my own opinion as the phone, but I don't mind giving the phone up.
Right, as long as you know for sure that, yeah.
That your child is okay or anything that's going on in the building. I don't mind him giving it up. But if I'm not gonna get that call, I don't want him to give it up.
Yeah, that's really good feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. So right now, the policy is that K through eight is not supposed to have it at all.
Yeah, okay, K through eight.
And then high school is, is different, that there's leniency for a teacher. Say agency for teachers, if that's what the policy currently says.
So that's what I mean when we say gray, this is built off of
That's, that's what the policy is. Two, two, two pieces. Um, one, myself as a parent and being in this district for the last, um, my entire life, I'm fifty in September, um, and, and have lived through the experience of pagers, beepers, flip phones, unsmartphones. My oldest had a cellphone in third grade because it was the first time she walked to school by herself. It was three blocks away and I did not care. I wanted to know when she got there and I wanted to know when she was leaving and how long it took her to get home. And I was, I was home, but I was like, I need to know when you get there, when you get back. She's had a cellphone since she was in third grade. And my middle school student right now, I would, I, I would not be able to concentrate. And it's got all kinds of restrictions. That girl can't talk to anybody except for family on her phone, but that's what I do. But it, it, it definitely is a, a safety and security thing. With that said, I feel like there's a word that we're not like giving enough credence to and enough conversation about, and it's engagement. We're saying that these phones are distractions. I've already mentioned that I think that they can be tools for the education of our children. They can be used as a level of engagement. Why is it that so many children rather be on their phones than paying attention to what the teacher said? We have a responsibility to be able to engage our students. The idea that, hey, you need to learn this, and here it is. We've had countless conversations and talked about curriculum and all different as- aspects of the environment inside our buildings that foster a sense of learning. If every single one of our children has that buy-in, we talk about parent buy-in, we talk about teacher buy-in, if all of our kids buy in to why they're in that classroom and they know the why, and we've talked about that before. Kids that have two classes that they think are the same, and they're like, why am I taking this class twice? Like, why am I even listening? Because they don't know the why and they check out. Of course I'm on my phone, because you already talked about this in the social studies class, and I talked about it, social, emotional learning, and I don't know why it's any different. I'm just gonna be on my phone and talk to my friends because really, Becky's having a hard time and I need to help her deal with her ex-boyfriend. Like, that's, that's what's happening.
She's in the third grade.
No, 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 this is definitely seventh. This is definitely, this is definitely seventh grade. Her name wasn't Becky, we're protecting her privacy. But like, the engagement of our students in our buildings is something we, we talk about, but then when we come and talk about a cellphone policy, I'm hearing a lot of weight on students need to just give up their phones. Students just need to give up their phones. And I'm asking for a little more consideration about why they'd rather be on their phones. And how we, as the adults, can foster that learning and maybe use the device to do so. If that device is something that they're going to be using for the next forty, fifty years or some other thing that now is connected to their ear and they got something attached to their eyeball and they blinked twice and they made a phone call, like, they are learned, they need to learn how to responsibly use that technology as they're moving out into society. And we have this unique opportunity to ensure they are Um, and we have this unique opportunity to ensure they are acting responsibly, just like with vaping. It's not a, hey, don't do the vaping. We talk about how are we educate, we have a policy on vaping that says we're supposed to educate our students. Why isn't that a part, if we're gonna change the policy, then the policy on cell phones should also include how we can educate our young folks to be responsible with cell phones. Engagement, responsibility, us working collectively together and not putting all this weight on children to say, just do what I said, because you shouldn't be on your phone. It bothers me and I hope that we give it more consideration. There are teachers that think of really inventive ways to, to maneuver and stuff. Who are they? Who are the teachers that don't have cellphone issues in their classroom? That never complain to you about cell phones going on? What is it that they're doing differently? Is it because they just feel like it's not gonna be enforced? Or is it because they found a different way to address the problem? And how can we learn from them? We've done that before. Teacher mentors, it's a whole thing. We have more knowledge in our buildings and I just want us to think outside of the box and not continue to be this, we just need to punish it away, do what I said, and it's bad and it's wrong. Because it has been said, the genie's not going back in the bottle. And this technology has the ability to get our children places that they couldn't have even imagined. Roman already plans on building a robot in space. He's probably gonna need a cellphone to do that, so. Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Before I continue with Board Member Amanda and Student Rep Joyce, we're going to end with those two comments. I want you to sleep on this.
Can I see, my hip, my hip is killing me.
Yeah, you can sit down, you can sit down. Thank you, Principal Green, thank you. Yeah, thank you. But.
Just as old as I am.
I was, I'm there.
Yeah, I will ask everyone to kind of, the board, to reflect on this. We will continue this conversation tomorrow before we continue with the school culture and climate. But I do wanna respect the fact that we have several staff members here that are going to talk to, to that topic. But I do wanna thank the board members, all of you, for engaging, processing, and I'm sure we will hear more tomorrow. And thank you so much, Principal Green, because I do wanna mention too, he was, this was like, can you talk to the board? Like, so, you know, so thank you, because on the spot you were amazing, and I am using that word. Amazing, no, seriously, you were, because again, I just literally walked out there and said, can you do this first?
And then I was like, can you break this?
Yeah. So thank you very much, we appreciate you, we do. So now we are going to transition and we are, just to let everyone know, we are going to end at eight thirty. So the conversation around the school culture and climate, we will begin today, but we will again, continue it tomorrow. Okay, we're good? So I do wanna say a few things.
Wait, do I get it?
Oh, yeah, Board Member Amanda, thank you. I was just, you see, I test to see if you're listening to me. So, no, Board Member Amanda and Student Board Member Joyce, go ahead.
Um, so a couple of things, just in response to Jamaica. First of all, I, I always appreciate your passion and I do, like truly, I do. Um, a lot of what we're hearing tonight is the, first and foremost, the distraction in the classrooms. Um, but we have talked about in other ways that the phones could negatively impact the students even more so, like even more personally than just not paying attention in the classrooms. Um, and I don't think at any point in time we've ever mentioned that we wanted to like punish this away. Like, we do want it to be a learning experience, we want all the necessary people to be involved. Um, you know, it's not like we're like, you have your phone, you're suspended, because that doesn't, I mean, that's silly. Uh, you know, no one wants.
But they do do that, they do, it's true.
Well, and that's, okay, so that's something that hopefully the procedures in this tiered approach will alleviate. Um, but for the purpose of us on the board, you know, like we have to remember too that while the how is important, like we are the what, like the, the policy in and of itself. So, um, and I do agree, teaching every single person about their phones and the negative, uh, you know, how negative it can be to be on it all the time, um, is true. But at the same time, if they're too busy on their phones to pay attention to learning that in a class, you know, we kind of have to start somewhere. And, you know, maybe at first the policy, it's a, it's a little, the procedures, they're a little bit more strict. And, you know, over the course of time, as students learn, maybe trends change a little bit. You know, COVID hit everyone hard and it is an addiction that needs to be broken essentially. And it's our job to protect our kids and make sure that they have the best education that they can get. And if the phone is getting away in the way, whether it's a physical distraction in the class to the person who has it in their hand, to the person who's sitting next to them, wondering if they're being talked about or, you know, you know, someone who had a, you know, I'm the worst like candid photo person ever. Like, if someone took a picture of me like mid-sentence, I'm probably looking like this. Like, that could be really embarrassing to a, a student. Um, who's already, you know, just struggling to, to be in school every day. So I, I hear everything you say, I, I am on board with you that I don't ever want this to be like a, you have your phone, you're suspended, like that's not effective. We, it has to be a multi-step approach, we have to teach them. But sometimes in order to teach and to get the point across, you have to take it away so that you, they don't have a choice but to listen. And the last thing that I wanna bring up is, you know, for different students, different subjects are, are just, you can't even, even if you force them to, pay attention. And, you know, for me, it was chemistry, I, it didn't matter who taught it. I didn't matter how mu- how much time I spent studying it, I just didn't like it. So if I had an easy distraction to just pick up my phone and, and scroll, you know, that's something that I would do. So I understand that, again, sometimes the distraction just needs to be taken away during the school day. They can have their phones on the way to school, after school for the safety purposes, absolutely. I was, as a parent, you know, would, would definitely want my students to be able to call if something happened in case of emergency on the way to and from school. But during the school day, if it's truly a disrupt, distraction in the classroom, not to mention, you know, the, all the bullying that happens that we might not even know about. You know, it's our job to like protect our kids and to teach them. And at this point in time, in my opinion, the best way to do that is just to, you know, completely, um, reduce the, the phone usage during the day.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, and Joyce?
Uh, so my thing, I would like to talk about the cyberbullying aspect of having phones in school. And I wanted to add, where is school? And we know this is continuously happening with the kids and we're saying, like leave the enforcement up to the teachers. But is there something that we can do to mitigate, reduce or help that problem as it is becoming a big issue? Or is it something that, okay, leave it off to the teachers, maybe we could do something with prevention, talking about it? It's not really about the cellphone, I wanna talk about just one of the cyberbullying aspects about it. But is there something about, something we can do to help a issue that's already happening?
So can I speak then?
Yes, even though I, uh, the Director of Safety and Climate, he's going to, that might be a good transition.
But I wanna give a plug.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Oh, sure.
So, so we do, we, school counselors, like, we have a stringent DASSA reporting, which is Dignity for All Students Act. Like, we take bullying seriously. Now, here's the problem, right? We've utilized student cellphone recordings to ID people that we had no idea that are involved. So sometimes I struggle with the consequence when I'm using your device to figure out what the problem was. Right, and who did what? And a lot of time, Mr. Green, I'm gonna screenshot it so you can see it, right? So that's where I struggle, but for, you know, a, a plug, we had September twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, I'm, I'm losing it. We have, um, a, a program coming in for bullying. It's a full-day assembly BMX guys that are coming in to speak to bullying. Um, it's gonna be awesome. So we, we do, we do things like that and it's up to, when it comes to bullying, it's the teacher reports it if they know, other than that, like that is out of their hands. Like, their, their role is to teach, right? And, and we need that. So that's when school counselors, social workers, sites, and administrators get involved with, with the bullying piece. I know.
Thank you. And we are now going to transition and begin the school culture and climate, safety, security screening and survey data. And again, tomorrow we will revisit the cellphone policy, but we will begin first with this topic and then give some time for the cellphone. So thank you. Um, this is Jeff Russo, he's the Director of Safe, Climate and Safety, of Safety and Climate.
School safety?
School safety.
School climate, safety?
Yes.
Sorry about what I meant. Easy, easy topic to follow, uh, that's right.
So I do wanna say something quick. We have, um, a crucial topic, and this is a very crucial, crucial topic to address for many of the reasons that kind of have surfaced, um, that addresses the school environment, including school culture and climate, safety measures, and the effectiveness or non-effectiveness of se- of security screening systems. Additionally, additionally, we will be reviewing recent survey data that provides valuable insights to these areas. And those, that data we may see tomorrow, not today, I'm not sure, okay? So welcome, welcome.
Thank you. For President Rivera, Dr. Coto, um, board members. Uh, I would like to talk tonight about our school culture and climate, safety and security screening systems. Um, I know it's a, it's a large topic, big topic for debate. Um, we definitely have some guests, uh, to help us get through this a little bit and talk through it a little bit. Um, but I do wanna mention that, um, you know, first, I came here three years ago, just about three years ago, and we had pretty much a lack of safety measures going on. And we were just coming out of COVID and it was in, you know, we're in a pretty tough spot. And I think that we have come a long way. I think that, um, you know, in my mind, when I take a look at our pillars, um, safety touches on all four pillars all the time. Um, you've heard me say from the day I got here that I don't believe kids learn unless they feel safe. Um, I, I will always stick by that. I'll also agree when people challenge me on what is safety, uh, because everybody has safety in a different opinion, they all have a different opinion of safety and what that means. Uh, but I think in my mind, what it comes down to when it comes to safety, systems is number one. That's probably the biggest pillar that it falls under. Um, layers and relationships, those are the three things that I would mention for safety. All right, so systems, layers and relationships, and that's kind of what I wanna keep in mind as we go through this tonight. Uh, first, when I take a look at that slide, um, I, I first wanna touch on some of the things that we put in place. And when I talk about things we put in place on this slide, it's about personnel. So we've put safety team members in place, parent liaisons, restorative practice specialists, social workers, psychologists, community engagement officers, all these people who we put in place to the tune of about five point one million dollars per year. Um, these are all extra supports. And we'll often hear people say, why can't we get more kids to help the stu-, or more staff to help the students? And I agree wholeheartedly, that that is what we wanna do, we always wanna build relationships. Any safety trainer in the world that knows anything about safety will tell you, the number one thing that creates safety is kids having a meaningful relationship with an adult in the building, all right? So I know safety comes down to relationships, I wanna recognize Ms. Miles, the teacher, earlier on said that. Um, that, and, and, you know, I, I think that when we talk about safety, we always have to keep relationships in mind. And so I think that all those individuals listed on that slide there, uh, and the money invested is all wise. It's all very, i- i- it's been spent in a way that, um, is really beneficial to the kids. And I think that, um, two and a half years ago, we did a redesign survey where every single stakeholder group said safety was the number one problem in this district. And I think that we're moving the bar on that. Um, I don't know that I would necessarily say that it wouldn't have the same result if we gave the survey today, but I can tell you that we've moved the bar and it's in large part because of the adults that we've put in the buildings. All right, so relationships matter. In addition to that, um, the Student Support Services Division, um, under Assistant Superintendent for Student Support, Andrea Tote, they've added, you know, the, the systems like gaggle, speak-up for safety, the tip line, uh, substance abuse counselor, nurses, free services, free counseling services for students. All those things are available through student support. And again, it's all things that we've added, um, as far as personnel go to the buildings. The next slide is gonna mention some of the physical things we've done. We did upgrades to our management system, our visitor management system, um, the cameras and access control, uh, student IDs, creation of an incident command center. These are all things to the tune of between five and ten million dollars probably that we've spent on physical safety items. So when everybody identified safety as the number one problem we had, I wanna definitely thank this board for digging in and saying, you know what? We trust that we're gonna put the right measures in place. And like I said, I believe we're moving the needle and it's because we are taking the lead in a lot of these things. And so I think that, um, when we come here tonight, we start to think about, um, you know, what other layers come next? What are the additional layers that we have, things that we can do? And so where we really start to talk about the additional layers is with our District Safety Committee. Um, who is the District Safety Committee? Well, it's mandated by state ed, um, that every district have a district-wide safety committee that meets every other month. Um, it can meet more frequently, we meet every other month, so six meetings per year. We had one this morning, as a matter of fact, um, and, and one of our board members was there. Um, we involve all stakeholders that we can, we involve the fire department, the police, community agencies, we involve our parent liaisons, our own staff, we have teachers. Uh, we have a lot of people, we generally have, you know, twenty-five to forty people, uh, on a call when we have the District Safety Committee meetings. And they guide some of the conversation as far as what the next layers are, what are the next things that we add. Um, again, the, the goal of the District Safety Committee is to guide the buildings and their safety responses, but it's also to kind of pick and choose what are the layers that we need to add as a district for safety. All right, so, um, about, I'm gonna say December, we had some issues that came up. Um, and so an issue that came to the district-wide safety committee had to do with this slide that we see here, right? And it's the one that we all, you know, we all wish we didn't have, all right? We have, um, basically during the last school year, we had a loaded gun in two of our middle schools. All right, Omaida and Mount Pleasant both. We had pellet guns found on four different occasions, which pellet guns, if you've seen one these days, they look like real guns. Um, so we had six total, you know, basically handguns in the school. Then we had knives, uh, forty-six different occasions, um, so on average, that's about one a week. Um, and we had sixty-five incidents involving weapons altogether in secondary buildings, seventy-four district-wide. We did have somebody elementary with involving knives. So, um, you know, with that said, when it came to these incidents, we had a lot of people from the public, we had a lot of people from parents, community members, saying, what are you doing about this? When you just found two loaded guns in your schools, what are you doing about this? Um, and so on the heels of the first incident, which happened at Omaida, we started talking about this at the District Safety Committee meeting. Then we had the second incident in Mount Pleasant. And then weapons detection came up. And I think that in all my research, what I've learned is you don't ever wanna make safety decisions based on a knee-jerk reaction. We don't wanna just go out and buy something and throw it at the door and say, oh, that's gonna fix it, because that's not how you fix problems, all right? You have to dig into the problem, figure out what are the best solutions that you have to offer. So when we took a look at these, uh, things, these, these incidents going on with the safety committee, uh, we said, what could be our next step? And when we talked about it, we said, you know, let's form a subcommittee on weapons detection, because that is the number one thing that people would recommend when you're having a firearm come into your building, is put a weapons detection system in, all right? So when we tried to dive into that a little bit in December, we started talking about it and we put out a survey. And the survey, um, was, was, well, first we formed a subcommittee. The subcommittee's charge was to come up with a survey and put it out to everybody so that we could get a, uh, get the, the feel on what stakeholders wanted to do. And so that survey, I put a link in here, um, you're not gonna be able to probably see the link from here, I, we don't need to click on it. But I think if the board takes a look and, and anybody can take a look, it's open, it's an open link. Uh, but if you go to the column where all the comments are, you'll get the feel of what, where people were at. And I think that out of the five hundred and twenty or so responses that we had, um, you know, we, we basically came up with, um, about a seventy-five, twenty-five split as far as who was in favor and who wasn't in favor. I took a, on this next slide, um, again, a couple of things came up when we did this survey. First, we didn't ask any demographic information when we first put it out and one of our members brought that to my attention, so we added it. So the survey was not perfect, we, we know that, all right? So five hundred and twenty, twenty participants, uh, when you see who's listed on there. Participants, we felt pretty confident that, you know, seventy-five, twenty-five, about three quarters of, of the, the people that we're talking to, stakeholders, felt that weapons detection was a good thing to explore, at least take a look at. Uh, most people wanted to see it done right. When asked specifically, where would you put it? Um, you know, most people said, uh, about, well, it says here, fifty-five percent said I would put it everywhere. Um, others said just at the high school, others said just at football games. Uh, but, but on there it does say not at all, and, and there were very few responses that said not at all. Like, there were at least people saying, you know, it should be a football game, it should be at athletic events. And then even when we said it should be at football games, we had people bring to the committee, uh, you know, why football games? Why not swimbeats? Why not, you know, again, if you're gonna do it, do it right. And, and this speaks to, uh, what Ms. Miles said earlier, which is, if you're going to do it, be consistent about it. We believe in equity here, we wanna make sure that we're not singling any one group. Uh, we wanna make sure that we are doing this in a way that's fair for everybody. And so when we look at it objectively, we said, this survey probably wasn't enough good data for us. So we kind of went out and said, uh, well, before I get to the, to the next thing we did, I'll just say, the one question that kept coming up, because the statement that was made the most to the safety committee was that it feels like jail. That's what people heard as feedback was, the negative was, it feels like jail. And so the cert, the survey did ask, you know, where do you see weapons detection systems? Where do you see those things? And the responses, um, on this slide, as you see, most people said, uh, airports, amusement parks, malls. A very small percentage, less than five percent said that, you know, jails, courts, things like that. So I think that, you know, the thought that everybody thinks jail when they see one, you know, I went to Yankee Stadium a couple of weeks ago, I walked through a weapons detection system to go in. I went to Proctor's, I walked through a weapons detection system. Like, it has become unfortunately part of our society that we have violent incidents happen. Um, you know, there is no cure-all. This is not anything that anybody has ever said will fix every problem that you have. Uh, but I think it's definitely something that the discussion has. But I think it's definitely something that the discussion has led us to a point where we're at right now, which is, is it that next layer? Is it the next thing that we put into our schools to think about? So knowing that we had, well, let me talk about the district wide findings first. The committee, what we kind of came up with as our our list of, you know, here's the here's the overall sentiment as a district committee when we talked about this, widely regarded as, you know, the number one thing for school safety is relationships. We all understand that. It emphasizes the importance of building relationships and collaboration between all stakeholder groups. We want to ensure safety while not giving off the appearance of an overreaction. That's that knee jerk response. We don't want to do things just because we felt like there's the immediate fix. There is no single fix. All systems are only as good as their operators, fidelity, right? Pretty much anywhere you see weapons detection, I promise you, it's only as good as the people running the machines, because the airport has problems. Everywhere you go, they have problems. They are not foolproof, they're not a fix all, for sure. There is no price we can put on an act of violence, but multiple act, multiple avenues have to work together to achieve true safety. So, you know, again, that's that layered approach. We have to just do, we have to do what we can in layers. I think that, you know, there's no single solution, there's no simple solution, and we have a duty to take some action based on on what has happened. All right? So I think that, you know, in in my own experience and my own training, I know that if you were to go and meet with parents whose schools, students were involved in any kind of tragic incident that might have occurred, they would say, you know, what was the price that you put on on my child when you said that's not right for our school? Or, you know, that that's, and that's the litigation that comes up. We also have a liability issue. We also have to say, you know, we have multiple people saying, this is what you need to do, we're kind of recommending at this point, it's kind of what we need to do. And so it's like, what's the liability? What does it mean if we don't move forward with some other type of layer that is going to help keep guns out of our school specifically? So the next thing we did was we said, okay, our survey might not have been as good as it needed to be, let's enlist Thought Exchange to go forward with a with a better survey and ask some more pointed questions, ask some more, well, long story short, I have a guest here from Thought Exchange who is actually remote, this is the reason why we have technology in every which direction right now. Hopefully this works. Rupendra Pilkington is from Thought Exchange and I'm hoping to bring her on right now. So I don't know if Rup can hear me or.
She's there.
All right? So Rup is here. So my next couple of slides are for Rup. I'm not sure, can you see the screen? Can you see the presentation? All right?
Good job, tech team. They did great.
Excellent. So Rupinda, Rupendra, I apologize, Rup, as we know her, is going to go through the Thought Exchange, the questions asked, and maybe some of the themes. All right? So Rup, go ahead, take it away.
Well, thank you everyone for allowing me to join. I hope everyone can hear me, so give me a thumbs up or, yeah, okay, oh, great. So, yeah, thank you for allowing me to come in. I know that we have a time that we want to be out of here, so I'll be as quick as possible. But just as everyone knows, I work very closely with your district and your administrative staff when it comes to engaging your stakeholders in your community. And so this is just one of the avenues that we did support with. So I'm here just to really to dive into what you're looking at and then answer any questions if we have time, or I can take questions away and answer at another time. So I don't know who's leading the show here on the slideshow.
I got you.
Okay, thank you. We can move to the next slide.
Oh, I lost it. I don't have control anymore. Brian, you're going to have to take control.
That's his favorite thing to do.
Okay, well, there you go. Perfect. Okay, so previously or slides, we have the link to the survey, I believe. So what you'll see here is you're able to see the top themes that were coming up from each of the four stakeholder groups that were surveyed. And so we were able to really showcase the themes that were coming up, the insights that were drawn from these themes, and the areas of concern that came up for each of the stakeholder groups. So this was the community. And so what I want you to pay attention to as you're going through these next four slides is the commonalities that are coming up between all of the stakeholder groups. So additional safety measures being the thing that we're speaking about right now. We can move to the next slide. Oh, oh, we went to families. So this is your families. So again, you know, here are some of the five categories, the themes that are coming up. Again, school safety measures, security screening systems coming up as well. And again, further insights as to the percentages of who felt well and the areas of concern. And so we can go again to the next one, which I believe is faculty and staff. Additional safety measures are there again, security screening systems, school safety measures. Again, these are the top themes that were coming up with the responses in your survey or your Thought Exchange. And for those of you that don't know about Exchanges, we are an engagement platform that allows you to, as well, have a conversation with your principal or deputy. And it is an open and honest conversation, and there's anonymity involved, and it's really just so that everyone, you can utilize this to make sure that everyone has a collective voice in the conversation and that whatever actions you take, you can wholeheartedly say that you're taking it from the results of a collective group, so everyone never be impacted by any of these decisions. You can go to the next slide as well. So this is your student body. So this is the themes that are coming up for them. And again, safety measures, security screening also coming up for them. The names of the themes, just in case everyone's wondering why they're different, even though they're the same thing, is based off of the words that your just fingered used. So obviously faculty and parents were using different verbiage to give that theme name. So that's why for students, you know, less is more with students, so security screening is all they kind of wrote when they were saying things around that topic area. If you go to the next slide for me, we wanted to really highlight across all four stakeholder groups, who voted yes to the security screening. One thing you will notice is if you dig into this data, you know, there was a lot of families and parents that were saying, I feel overall that my student is safe at the district. However, when you look correspondently, they still want to see additional measures take place to have an extra vote of confidence in safety. So even though they feel overall the safety is there, they still were very open to and wanting to see other scaled approaches of security. So just know that even though you feel safe doesn't necessarily mean that they are against additional measures. So that was something that was apparent. The darker the color, the more concentrated the response. We wanted to show kind of a demographic that you asked about ethnicities. So just so that you can see across all four groups, who were rating where when it came to the security screening. And then I think the last one there, yeah, this is, I'm not taking credit for this one, this is Mr. Russo putting this together just again to show you the commonality between all four groups of where they wanted to see the support for safety measures being placed. I think that was it for my slides, but please let me know if you need me to forge any things further detail.
So I think, Rup, if you're going to be, are you going to be available tomorrow for questions?
Sure. Sure, I could be.
So so if we reconvene tomorrow night, Rup will be available to answer any questions about the Thought Exchange data. And if you have questions tonight, you come up with it, send an email, we'll get them to her ahead of time and she can she can answer that way too. All right? So thank you, Rup.
Thank you.
So moving on to, moving on to, you know, the next slide, actually, I want to back up one second there on that slide that I spent so much time on. There were, I want to point out, 321 family participants, 1,012 faculty have stabbed 954 students, 60 from the community. That's probably the biggest survey that we've done at the time I've been here. 2,400 people or so took part in the survey. We opened it for over a month. We had great feedback in that survey and I feel like the themes are very, you know, it's good data points. And I think that that's that's important here. So the next thing I did was I contacted, based on our conversations going on in December and January, I contacted a company called Armored One that I was familiar with that does threat assessments on buildings. Every one of the board members has a yellow book in front of them that is called the appendix for Armored One. And what it is, Armored One is a company that basically goes to schools and they do basically your threat assessment. And they say, what exactly are you, where are you falling short? Where are you doing really well? And the, what I gave you in the appendix, it's a confidential document, so we can't make it available to the public. But basically what you're looking at will be best practices, it's what the recommendations are. In addition to this book, they went to every building, they took photos of stuff that that showed proof of what we do, what we don't do, and made its recommendation. So every school has its own 40 page document, that's about an 85 page document. And I think the one thing that I wanted to point out from the Armored One book is that in that appendix, it talks about weapons detection. And it gives a lot of data on the research behind it. And I know that we do hear and read articles about how ineffective it is, but there are an equal number of articles and data that says it's effective. And, you know, I can tell you that the point that was made to me was by one of the owners of the company who said, you know, I was a person who was in schools in South Carolina, we had a large district in South Carolina, and we went from 16 gun incidents one year to zero the next after installing a weapons detection system. So, you know, it's one of those things where we don't, we know we're not going to get zero, we know we're not going to have perfect, you know, relationships still matter. This is not the end all be all, it's not the one solution, but it's a layer. It's a layer that we think we need to add at this point in time to what we do. And so I think that when we read through that annex or the appendix and when we see the different recommendations made, you know, it clear as day, it says need for multiple layers, continuous improvements all the time, you have to keep up to date. There's actually a link on the on the page that breaks of the annex I was talking about. Weapons detection systems as a next layer is what's talked about in there. And the reasons why is because it addresses your key points of vulnerability, arrival dismissal, creates a secure and positive environment, that learning environment that we talk about, and the reduction of weapon and weapon related incidents, and the data is in that link that I provided. So, you know, again, it's just to kind of show, all right, here's the next logical layer that we would add, not an end all be all. I I'm passionate about school safety, it's what I do. I'm not exactly passionate about weapons detection, and I don't know that it's the answer. And I just know it's a layer. And I know that it's it's a response, and it's something that we've done a lot of research on. So at this point in time, it is something, when I when I look at all this together, I say, it would be my recommendation that we do that. And so I think that that's not easy for me, because I don't like to make commitments on things like this, because I know the flip side, I know the arguments against, and I know it's a difficult topic. But I recognize the fact that our job is to keep everybody safe, and we have to create that safe learning environment. I need kids to know that there's not a gun in their school all the time. And and that's kind of what I would be hoping for. So when we look at weapons detection, you know, and I know that we're in a time crunch here, but I have one more guest that I want to get up before I get into it. So real quick, I'm just going to run through. You know, we have traditional metal detectors, detects all metal, it's slow, it's going to it's going to make people have to put their hands on bags and do searches and things like that. It's the least expensive technology. You know, it's definitely, when used properly, it finds everything, vapes, knives, but, you know, there's some school districts that have added these and added hours to the wait to get into the building. I want to say you mentioned that a couple of weeks ago about the wait to get in line to get into school, the the wait time and how much of a delay it could be. So the the things against traditional metal detectors, they're slow, you need a lot of units, they require additional tables and a lot of extra stuff in your lobby to try and make it happen. They oftentimes will sell you an x-ray machine to go with it, because that's what comes next. When you don't want to search bags anymore, you're going to need the x-ray machine. A school district like Syracuse does have that in place. When you walk into Syracuse schools, the high school, it looks like you're going through TSA. You know, it definitely is a is a different feel. You know, and I think a traditional metal detector, they use them in Albany, and it definitely has a different feel when you walk in. It doesn't feel the same welcoming kind of, you know, it's definitely a visual deterrent. So again, that's some of the cons with it. You can kind of, you know, take a peek through that, everybody's going to have their own opinion on what that looks like. The next thing that I looked at was some AI weapons detection. AI weapons detection is something that doesn't actually use a machine, it's something that kind of goes on your cameras, and it picks up weapons that are visible to the camera. And, you know, so there's some things that are good about that, there's some things that are bad about that. It's a newer technology, it's relatively expensive for, you know, for what you're getting. It's not something you can really publish to people that you're doing, you know, we could have in place right now. I wouldn't be able to tell people that yes or no. So it's not something that we can really go out and brag about, hey, we did this, you know, it's it's, it did become available through BOSI, so it's a little bit more affordable. But the goal of AI weapons detection is really to prevent the the really bad incident from happening, where there's a bad actor approaching your school. It's not about necessarily what's coming into the school day to day. It's really about a lot of the tragic situations that have happened, the research has shown, one or two minutes beforehand, there was a person somewhere getting a gun ready. And, you know, your cameras outside could pick that up, that's what this technology is really all about. And then the final technology from today would be an enhanced weapon detection system. Some of the names you might have heard, Open Gate, I think was the one that had at Yankee Stadium when I went down there, Evolve, Ronin Extract One, there's a whole bunch of new ones out, they all do a little bit something different. But these are the towers that you see that look like you're going into Macy's, they kind of, you could put a wrap on them, you could put your school logo on them. You know, I think there's a lot of different technologies out there, they all basically come with an iPad that show you a little circle around where it's detecting something. Some of them claim to be completely touch free, a person just goes around and goes back through until they've removed whatever the item is that that was alerting it. You know, so I don't want to misspeak on any of this stuff right here, so I brought a couple of experts in. You know, one, I have Phil and Jill, both from Evolve that are here. Phil is the representative in the area for Evolve, Jill is an education specialist with Evolve, so she is familiar with schools. She was an assistant superintendent, she was assistant superintendent. And so I'm actually going to invite the two of them up here real quick to just kind of give you an overview of what I said wrong and correct me and kind of take it from there.
Oh, my goodness. Well, we're already over time, so I'm cognizant of that and I want to respect everyone's time in the room. I know we'll be here again tomorrow. So I came from Michigan to be here with you. Thank you for inviting in the voice of visitors to a very passionate conversation. And you guys are obviously modeling for your students how to have discourse that is uncomfortable but professional, so thank you for that. As a parent, that's nice to see. When it comes to our systems, I was a user first, and so I don't often bring up my background because I don't believe in fear based sales, but I was an assistant superintendent in Michigan in that district where the parents are being charged because a student brought a weapon to school and took four of our students from us in Oxford. And so that's how I became aware of the systems was when it was too late. So I applaud you for having these very difficult conversations before the fact, I will never say that our system is the one thing that you can do, and certainly I love what you said, sir, about just putting the system at the door is not inherently going to make the building safer, it's the people and the process that support this technology that are way more important than the technology itself. The US Secret Service had a report in 2019 on averting school violence. I'm sorry to go through that. The number one way to avert a violent incident in a school was to have a single positive adult relationship. And so I feel my job at this company, whereas we have this fantastic technology, was really created for stadiums and for these places with high throughput with a lot of adults. I'm supposed to take this technology and look through the eyes of an educator, an English teacher, and a mother, and say, how is this good for kids and how is this good for teaching and learning? And so I would like to dive deeper into those conversations with you, but I feel like tonight maybe isn't the evening to do that. We'll be here tomorrow to do that. I don't know if you want to talk a little about the technology itself, Phil?
Yeah, two minutes? I'll fly. So, just, and my name's Phil, I live in Rochester, I am the Evolve rep for New York State. So, any school, any hospital, any concert venue, sports stadium, whatever has put Evolve in, I've been hands-on with it throughout. So, what I, just the one thing I really wanted to hit, Jeff asked me to talk about this, is, you know, we had pictures, we talked about metal detectors earlier. Evolve is not a metal detector, we're very serious about that, we are a weapons detection system, we function completely differently, and the outcome and the experience of going through Evolve becomes completely different as well as what you're used to when you go to a ballgame, or you go to the airport and you're taking everything out of your pockets, right? That's on purpose. Our target customers are places that would never dream of putting a walkthrough metal detector and an X-ray machine, or making you take your shoes off when you come into the building. We want to make this a positive experience, we want to lower that point of anxiety for not only your students or visitors, but also your staff operating the system, right? The three really big points that I think separate Evolve from any other security screening technology, the one is the technology itself, right? We use artificial intelligence, we are not going to alarm on cellphones, car keys, zippers, belt buckles, any of the stuff that drives people nuts when they go to a concert or something like that, right? We're comparing us to metal detectors, I don't think it's a fair comparison. Metal detectors are 100-year-old technology, we spend a lot of the night talking about smartphones and how they're different from 30 years ago, this is from 100 years ago. So, the Evolve system is drastically different and drastically improved over those systems. The second thing is, we try to provide as many tools as possible for all of our users, especially in the K-12 market. The K-12 vertical is probably our single biggest source of customers across the country. How many districts are we?
I remember 1,000 schools.
1,000 schools across the United States alone.
On a daily basis, we're screening about 635,000 students across the country.
That's good, I should know that off the top of my head. The biggest thing is, K-12 is not an easy environment to do this, right? You're not a stadium, you're not a concert where you can tell people you can only bring a clear plastic bag in this bag. Kids show up, they have duffel bags, lunch bags, backpacks, everything else, right? The system is designed with tools to help your staff, Jeff's staff, and everybody else that's operating the system, get those students in safely, quickly, efficiently, and in a way that's sustainable. It's not gonna be something that you're gonna install, and then, in six months, say, "This is too much, we don't want to do it anymore, we have to pull it out." And the third big thing is gonna be partnership, right? Again, because K-12 is so difficult, that's why we have people like Jill with us at Evolve. We partner very closely with all of our end-users, we make sure that your staff is trained so that they can effectively run the machines, that they can do it in a way that is minimally invasive for your students. It's a positive point of contact, it's a positive relationship in the morning, in a way that you guys can be effective, keep your school safe, keep things out of school that aren't supposed to be there, but also get everybody in in a timely manner.
And I did want to just mention, if you have just a second. So, we talk a lot about data, and I did research quite a bit on metal detection when I, my district went through what it did. We didn't want to be a metal detector district, whatever that might mean from a stigma perspective. And there is research out there, I heard this first speaker that shows that it can create a very negative environment and negative perceptions of safety, and actually minimal impact on actual violent incidents. I know that you are interested in data, I have some data from some of our schools that I'm able to share, that actually shows our system over the course of two years in one of our North Carolina districts that they've given special permission to share with you, showing the decrease in weapons, and more importantly, I would say, or maybe just as important, not only the weapons themselves, and because of all of the other prohibited items that no longer made it into the building. So, those piddly, you know, exchanges with students where we're kicking them out of school because they have something that we know is prohibited item, that was reduced greatly, and I have some data to show that as well. And I really want to mention, we talked a little bit about some of the other technologies that are out there that are also preventative, but maybe closer to boom, we talked about left-of-boom in the industry, like, how close to boom are they? Many times with the threat landscape in this type of district, you're not looking at someone who has a targeted attack. It's not going to be, most likely statistically, like what I experienced in my community experience. It probably will be a student who's going to have a fistfight, but because they have a weapon with them in school, it escalates quickly. Because they're adolescents, because they're decision-making, because they have it in their pocket, they didn't come to school that day intending to harm someone, but what may have been body-on-body quickly becomes a weapon fight. And that's actually what this data is showing. And so, we are a solution to try and address that particular problem, keeping the weapons outside of the building and mitigating that as much as possible. Again, not perfect, not a, you know, clear way forward, but certainly something that can help, and an incredible resource to add is another layer to all the other great things you're doing. I was excited to see you're using Gaggle, I do not work for Gaggle, but I was a user, and I love it, we actually stopped a suicide in my district with Gaggle, so I always try and speak positively about them, and some of the other great things that you're doing. So, this would just be one of many other things, and we need to build on the other investments you've already made to incorporate it into a greater safety plan.
So, I'll continue just for a minute, and then we'll be done. And I won't take anybody, any questions from anybody. So, I think, you know, that was the end of my presentation as far as this went tonight. I went through it fast, I, this 100% school safety is my passion, it's what I do, it's what I want to do all the time, and I know kids don't learn unless they feel safe, I just believe that, you know, through and through. So, the one thing that I did want to mention that I forgot to mention was that when I got to those detection systems, that it is the safety team that would operate them, and it's the people that we've been trusting to build relationships with kids, and, you know, that relationship matters. And so, whenever I try to add a layer, I try to add something to build off what we've already done, and I think that we've done a good job with that. Anytime I've gone to anything national, people I've spoken with and described what we've done, people are pretty impressed with what you guys have accomplished here, you know, what we as a team have accomplished here, and the fact that a district was willing to say, "Safety's a problem here, let's fix it," and every layer that we've recommended has come into place. And I think that because of that, we have moved the needle. I think families did respond, and Rup would say it, families did respond, they feel like their kids are safe at school, but they'd still like to see it be a little bit safer. That's kind of what I got from the data. So, you know, I think that without questions tonight, that's kind of where I'm at with it, and I think tomorrow we can pick this up, and definitely Phil and Jill. They were invited to come back tomorrow night, they know that they'll be here tomorrow for that, Rup has made herself available tomorrow night as well, so I think, questions, please go home tonight, come up with whatever questions you want, and make sure that we're ready to fire away tomorrow, we'll be good to go, alright?
So, if there's no further business, I'll ask, hold on, Michelle.
Oh, sure.
Consent agenda, on the consent agenda number 11, we never voted on that.
I'm sorry?
We never voted, we never voted.
Consent agenda 11.
Number 11?